Good morning and welcome. So good to have you with us here to participate in county government and be better informed about what's going on. This time I'll call the Polton County Board of Commissioners work session to order for October the 12th, 2021. I don't see any elected officials this morning. If you've got a mobile device, it'd be a good time to turn it off. The marshal will bring the list forward, please. We are very fortunate and blessed to have Pastor Wayne Strickland from Bethany Christian Church to be with us this morning, Wayne, and bring us invocation and lead us in the pledge of the flag. And you can preach if you want to. Stand if you're able.
Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to be here to pray with you guys today. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, God, we just come to you this morning. And Father, first and foremost, we just want to thank you for who you are. God, we want to thank you for all that you do. Help us to see you, help us to hear you. Father, I pray that we would feel your presence in our lives every day. Thank you for this community that we live in, God. Thank you for the county that we live in. Thank you for the freedoms that you've given us here in this great nation, in this great state. And God, I pray that we will never take for granted the blessings that you've given us. Father, I thank you for all those that you have called to lead us, those people that you have put in place with the knowledge and the wisdom that you've given them. And Father, I ask that you would continue to protect them and guide them and watch over them through the tough decisions that they have to make. God, direct them in their lives, protect their families. Father, I thank you for the citizens of this county. I thank you for their desire to make this a great place to live for all of us, for our children. God, I pray that you continue to watch over us, keep us safe. Thank you for our first responders. Father, thank you for all the firefighters and the EMS and law enforcement and the medical professionals in our community. Father, thank you for those that make sure that our freedoms that come from you are protected and secured. Thank you for calling them to your service. Father, thank you for all those that watch over everything else in our county, God, our utilities, our linemen, our water, our transportation, all those people who dedicate their time and their effort and their knowledge to make sure that everyone's taken care of. Thank you for them. Father, I thank you for our health. And Father, I pray that you would heal us, that you would heal us as a nation, that you would heal us physically, spiritually, that you would heal us emotionally. Father, I pray that you would bring healing to those who are sick. Father, bring comfort to them and peace to them. Father, I pray for all those families of the ones that we've lost. Father, I pray that you would take them and you would just hold them in your arms and let them feel your presence in their lives, God. Let them feel that peace that only comes from you and that's beyond anything that we can understand and comprehend. And Father, most of all, I want to thank you for your son. Thank you for the sacrifice that was made on our behalf, for your gift of salvation and the gift of your Spirit. And Father, forgive us when we sin and continue to help us to look and act more like you. Father, in his name, in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
That means so much, Pastor Strickland. We thank you. The minutes of September the 28th, 2021, and September 28th, 2021, board meeting are available for review. This morning, under Team Paulding, we're going to recognize and showcase Ms. Lisa Scherling, who does such a wonderful job at the Paulding County Sheriff's Office. Here it goes.
We started training the sheriff's office together on the New World system along with Sergeant Gunner. And many days, she was right there beside me. We worked through it together. Both of us can be very shy, very quiet, very reserved, and we got through these training classes. And we're really sad to part ways whenever training was over. I got a whole new appreciation for Lisa because she's just brilliant. And she's really helped me come a long ways.
So I worked with Lisa on the New World software project that we've been implementing for probably over, a little over two years now, maybe even close to three years. And she asked me to come aboard to assist her in some of the build projects. And so I've been working with her pretty closely on a lot of these projects over the last year, year and a half.
So Lisa is over the records division in the sheriff's office. So they have to keep up to date with the Open Records Act. She has to keep up with all of the state statutes, all of the submissions to the state, Georgia State standards. She wears many, many hats here in the sheriff's office.
So Lisa is, she's a very quiet person. I've never seen her get too angry or too emotional. She's very intelligent. And I've seen her just pour into this project countless hours, a lot of emotion, and a lot of things that people don't see behind the scenes to make this thing successful. And she is literally the driving force behind this project and why it's successful. With this project, I can tell you, there were emails at nine and 10 o'clock that she and I would send back and forth about ideas.
So Lisa, you are a phenomenal person, and the sheriff's office could not have gotten through these past few months without you. And you are appreciated more than you will ever know.
If I could say anything to Lisa, and it's not something she doesn't already know, she is a very selfless person, and I'm deeply appreciative of her. She means a lot to me, as does John, and God, she just pours out her heart in this place.
Jeff Hawkins and your team, that was awesome. Great production there. We have no invited guests this morning under bid awards. Item number two is to approve the award for the HVAC unit and the installation for the state court build out to the lowest bidder. Addison Smith is that bidder in the amount of $60,500. And Ms. Pollard, our financial director, is going to report.
Good morning. Scott and I are going tag team some of these. So the HVAC, Jimmy Renfro, building maintenance, received three quotes. Those quotes ranged from $60,500 to $155,928. He's reviewed them all and believes that recommends award to the low bid. And if you don't mind, go ahead and read the second one, and then Scott can just get both of those at one time, if that's okay.
Okay. Item number three is to approve the award for the framing and drywall construction package for the state court build out to the lowest bidder, Atlanta Drywall, in the amount of Everybody knows the jail's located in post two, right? And let me read the next one, too.
No, no. And this is for the state court. We received three bids for the framing and drywall. Those bids ranged from $55,452 to $104,494. They've also been reviewed, and they're comfortable awarding to the low bid.
Operations manager Scott Green is going to add on to that.
This has been quite a teamwork effort, going back a couple of years now, with y'all working with our legislative delegation. Frank, this is close to his heart, coming from the court previously to bring us this state court in Paulding County. Although this is your first item since February, I think, of 2020, where you approved the referendum to go to the voters, this is the first item where we're actually starting construction. But we have not just started. We've been working for about a year on this project and in earnest, really, the last four months, particularly with building maintenance, Jimmy Renfro and his group purchasing materials. What we found with COVID is there's a lot of things that are in short supply. So we've been proactive in many ways, planning the space, moving things out of the way that we need to change about the space that were different than they were planned in 2007. Another thing the county did, which was great, was we put in shelf space for these two courts to allow for growth. And here we are, we now taking advantage of that. In fact, we've got 500 sheets of drywall and about 800 metal studs sitting in the space for all these years, waiting on this project. But there's still a lot of complexity to it, even though it's a great shelf space. We've got about 8,000 square feet of build out, two brand-new courtrooms, and then all the associated offices behind that. And like I said, there's a lot of lead items that we've been working on to get us to the point where we can move quickly from here. And we don't have a lot of time, and I've heard that loud and clear from several of y'all, that we need this court stood up beginning of next year. So we're working on that now. And this first bid is the modifications of the HVAC system. We had to reanalyze the demand on the system. We're having to add all the branches to the different spaces inside that area. And we're even having to add some power units to provide more flow. So all that's been worked on. And in fact, building maintenance has purchased the power units, which are another thing that can take months to get. So hopefully, we've got everything lined up, and we're going to move forward swiftly and smoothly from here on out. And we recommend this award to Addison Smith. Although there was a good spread in the bids, the bottom two were very, very close together, which to me indicates they were serious bidders, and they all saw the same scope of work, which is an indication that we had a good scope of work, to me. So I'll be glad to take any other questions. Jimmy, who's our local expert on the building and figuring out all the ins and outs of that, is here if you have any questions.
That's a great brief, Scott. I think even a sixth grader can understand that brief. Is that how you're presenting it?
You have to bring it down to a level where I can understand it, and if it's a sixth grader, that's fine, I'll take it. Certainly, I'm not as versed in the terminology and all the technical parts of the building. That's where we rely on our staff and department head experts in each area. And then Frank and I get to coordinate and get to cut a ribbon every now and then sometimes. So I appreciate that. So any questions on that? I'll move on to the drywall, just to add a little bit to that. Okay. The next item, Atlanta Drywall Systems, we had, like Tabitha said, we had three bidders. The lowest two bidders were just a few thousand dollars apart. So again, that indicates we had a good, tight competitive bid, and somebody was less interested but did go after the work. What we're finding is with the site conditions, with the noise that we could generate from this work, that both of these contractors have to consider that they will be working after-hours on occasion. They will have security protocols to go through to get in and out of the building, all through this work. That adds difficulty to their work and coordination with court security and court operations to make sure we're not disturbing the court calendar. And that is actually caused some of the contractors to shy away from going after the work. So some of our other bidders that we often see price this work did not bid. This gives you a little indication of the conditions of working in a building where you've got 100 or more employees working at any given time, along with jury deliberations and hearings and things like that. And we don't want to interrupt that. So we're having to prepare for those accommodations to stand down to work and then work after-hours when needed. These are both very competent companies. We've worked with both of them in the past in some form or fashion, so we're comfortable recommending award on both of these. Any other questions? Like I said, I'm here. Frank can tell you, write a book about standing up a court, I think, at this point, and give him a lot of help for working through all the logistical issues on the personnel side and the administration side. And then Jimmy, of course, with all the logistics with procuring this work and planning it out.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm just so delighted that I can finally see this sheet rock go vertical instead of horizontal. It has been there since the building was built many years ago now, but we're really excited to see this thing go vertical. And it's very much needed out here in Paulding County, the state court is, with our population size. So I'm real excited. Thank you, Scott, for all you're doing on this. Thank you, Jimmy, for everything you're doing.
Item number four is to approve the construction contract to provide a landfill cover on Phase One to the lowest bidder, Garni Construction, in the amount of $1,183,541. Ms. Four, I'm sorry, in post four, and Ms. Pollard to speak on it.
This is another one we've talked about for a while. I think in every budget discussion, landfill covers come up as to whether we were going to put a cover on it or anticipate putting a cover on it. We've had $1.4 million set aside for quite a few years to begin this process. Once we do use this, we will have to put some of that money back because this is only Phase One. And each and every year, when you have a landfill, you book the amount to cover it when you open the landfill. So basically, we have about $3 million, a little over $3 million estimated that it'll cost to close the landfill. And this is just the first phase of that process.
Bruce Coyle is our expert in this particular area. Bruce Coyle is our county engineer. He works with community development, which falls under Ann Lippman's office. But I do, because it's technical and it's engineering, I do a lot of coordination on the landfill with Bruce. We've got quite a few projects out there. Another one we're working on is the scale, scale replacement that needs to be done. But this has been basically a career project for Bruce Coyle. Ever since he came here, he's been doing something with the landfill, opening, expanding, and now for the last several years, trying to close it permanently. Although the landfill has been basically inactive since early 2000, we do have one phase open for occasional emergencies like storm debris and things like that, where we can mulch up or dispose of a structure or something. That helps us keep our costs down and serve the citizens. But other than that, the rest of the landfill is completely inactive, and we are now at the stage where we're under state mandate to permanently cap it and certify its closure. And basically, that extended that, and the way I understand it, Bruce, if you have questions, can answer a lot more technically, is that we're putting a waterproof layer above the landfill, the oldest part of the landfill. It was sort of a turtleback, as Bruce would say, layman's terms, to turtleback the water off of this area so that we don't have rainwater going into the old landfill. And it's not a small task. It's about seven acres of coverage where it has to be graded to drain, and then synthetic materials are placed on there, along with clay products to prevent the water from entering. Drainage systems, there's clearing, there's grubbing, there's borrow work, borrowed dirt that has to be brought in to make this happen. And it is fairly expensive work. We did have two bidders. The lowest bidder had an errand, had to drop out, and they were relieved of that. The next highest bidder was Garni, and we worked with them a little bit to bring the price down from their initial bid. They have identified items that cut out about $98,000 out of their low bid, which is where we are today. It's still a little bit higher than we budgeted for Phase One, and that is a concern. We'll have to watch as we get into the next phase. The balance of the landfill should be in the next phase. So we have multiple phases over the years that were open and active. But we're going to cover the remaining phases in one next project, and that we hope would go out for bid in early next year, if we stay on task here. But just to get this one currently underway, we recommend Garni. They're very experienced in this type of work. They've worked with us very recently with the reservoir projects, most notably, I guess, would probably be the transmission main from the reservoir all the way to this campus and tying into the Dallas Bypass Water Main. Good experience with them personally in my involvement. I know several of you all have found that they've been very responsive. So we feel good about the contractor, and we don't have any concerns about awarding the work to them. Other than that, if you have any questions about synthetic membranes and things like that, I'll introduce Bruce if you want.
All I can say is I'm just glad to see it finally get started. Obviously, 20 years ago, when it needed to probably be done, it'd been a little bit cheaper then. But, so I'm not happy with the price, but I am happy with Garni, with their experience on that transmission line. So hopefully, this project will be another one that goes pretty smooth.
One concern is we've had one retirement on this project. The engineer of record has moved to semi-retirement, and we're going to keep them involved with this last phase. And then Bruce has started to talk about thinking about retiring. I think we need a motion to make sure he doesn't retire until we get this finished. So we see it through. I just sprung that on him. Maybe I shouldn't have divulged that, but yeah, he's starting to talk about it. I think he's at that age. Hopefully, that's a few years off.
We'll just handcuff him to the desk. On the price side, Tabitha mentioned $3 million escrowed, and then this agenda item is just under $1.2 million. But you mentioned another phase, but we do several phases to complete. Will that, you think that'll stay below the $3 million?
The area involved, it's going to be more. I would say, and don't pull me to this, but two to three times more than this to actually close it. When we look at the overall phases, two through five, that need to be closed, they're not all the same size, so don't let that throw you off. But it's on the order of three or four times larger than this one for the next few phases. And so, but there's economy at scale, too. You put a bigger project out, we'll get more bidders involved, we may get a little bit tighter price. Maybe contractor availability gets better, although I'm not real hopeful. The trend has been with all the work going out in infrastructure is the market is tighter. There's more work out there, and prices tend to go up in that situation, along with commodity prices. So those are all things that could see it go up well above what we're seeing here. But it's a have-to now. We've budgeted through our financial assurances, as Tabitha mentioned, to accommodate the inflation and things like that. But you may have a little more inflation and a little more cost involved than what we could anticipate a few years ago. So we'll deal with it when we get it. Unfortunately, we'll just have to. And then we'll do our best to make sure we get some competitive bids and bring you some options at least to move this forward, hopefully, early next year on the next phase, if not sooner.
Any other questions for Scott, Jimmy, or engineer Bruce?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, maybe a little bit more exciting than landfills is a report from the airport department. And to do that, we've got Airport Director Terry Tibbetts. And thank you for being here, Terry, and bringing us this report, this update.
One of the pleasurable things that I get to do now is to come and highlight the things that have happened at the airport recently. And so today is no different. We've got a lot of very, very good, all positive things going on out there. And I thank you for the opportunity to, Mr. Baker, briefly, come and present the airport. Thank you all. So let's get started. I always like to start off with a shout-out to my board. The board is made up of a combination of elected officials and volunteer citizens in our community. And this board works very well together. Couldn't be prouder of the work that we've jointly been able to accomplish. And for the ones that are not elected officials, they don't get paid for this. And so this is a service to their community, and it's appreciated by me, and I know it's appreciated by you as well. The sign pointing you to the Paulding County Airport is very difficult to miss. We're right at the edge of Paulding County, between mile markers three and four on the west side. So not a whole lot going on in that side of the community yet, but there's a lot coming to West Paulding. This is the inside of our terminal building, one of the most beautiful buildings in the county, in my opinion. I'm very blessed to be able to go through these doors every morning as I go to work. And then, of course, the view from the air. This is one of the prettiest airports, in my opinion, not that I'm biased, but it is a very beautiful piece of property out there, now a very well-protected piece of property from two aspects. Number one, we have completed our four and a half miles of wildlife fencing, and that is doing a good job of keeping the larger mammals off the runway off the airport proper. And then our 24/7 Pilots Lounge is getting us a lot of visits from law enforcement at night. We have the only open restroom west of this building, if you want to think about that, for law enforcement to use after-hours. So that gets us a lot of extra circuits through the property. And that's very important for an airport, for a regional airport like ours. A lot of nefarious things happen at airports late at night, drugs and human trafficking and those kind of things. And we've got a very good security camera system set up. We've got very good law enforcement out there that pay attention to what's going on at the airport, and I believe that we run one of the safest airports in the state. So aside from our usual mandate of running a safe and efficient airport, that's our directive from the FAA, and that is, of course, the thing that we focus on every day, making sure that our airport is efficient, making good use of the federal funds that have been allocated to put toward it, as well as state and local funds, and then making sure that it's safe for operation for the flying public that comes through there. But we also have special projects and special focuses that we pay more attention to than some other things. And these are the three that we're focusing on most now: economic development, education, and expansion. Economic development, a lot of people that I talk to have a hard time believing that we've got 12 businesses and organizations with a presence at the airport. Doesn't mean that this is their headquarters, but it means that they have at least a presence out there, our flight schools, our maintenance facilities, our companies that do business at the airport. And this is very important to us, and this is an aspect of having an airport that we want to focus on and grow. For the second year in a row, we're on track to generate over half a million dollars in ad valorem tax. That money doesn't come to us, it comes to y'all and goes to the school board, and that's our contribution to the county finance model, business model. And about two-thirds of all ad valorem tax typically goes to the Board of Education. And the nice thing about an airport is we have zero students. Since we have zero permanent population based out there, we have no school kids to educate, but we still provide $200,000 or $300,000 a year to the Board of Education. And so that is a very good shot in the arm for them to help our young kids as they're getting educated in Paulding County. We've had a couple of aircraft owners move to Paulding County because of the airport this year, the first time in my tenure that I've seen that happen. And that sounds a little funny to some people, but if you think about golfers, they move to golf courses. If you think about people who are interested in fishing and other water sports, they move to the lake. Aviators like to be around their airports, and if we had the facilities, namely terminals or hangar buildings, we would see a lot more of this because we know that aviators who are focused on traveling in their personal aircraft like to be close to the airport where they can get facilities for their airplane. So this is a good way to bring additional high-end population to the Paulding County area. So that's a part of economic development that we're interested in. And to that end, we've got a waiting list for T-hangers now with over 70 people. Now, obviously, not all 70 of those would move in today if we had a hangar. Some of those are on multiple airport waiting lists. There is a critical shortage of hangers across the area. But I've been tasked by GDOT to update this list, refine it, find out what's real, and they are beginning to make noises about trying to help us more in this area. So that's new and exciting to us, and so we'll, of course, honor that request, fine-tune this list, and see if we can determine what our real need is and try to go after money to do that. So again, focusing on economic development, the Business Center, which is the office building attached to Hangar One, stayed empty for a very long time. And the space that you're looking at here was a dirt floor about this time last year, a little bit before that. It's been about 18 months now since we began working on this in earnest. But this ground floor is now fully built out and fully occupied. This is our 24/7 Pilots Lounge, which is on one end of that space. This is the maintenance facility that's now in part of Hangar One. This is the museum that's operating out of the 1,500 square feet on the north side of the Business Center. Our flight school that has been here now for about three years, Flying Tigers, has now expanded to their fourth airplane, and they've moved into the Business Center so that they could get more office space. And we're now opening our second private flight school, Buiki Aerospace, who is not a new flight school. They're based out of Kissimmee, Florida, but they're opening a satellite campus here. And so we're excited to see them come to Paulding County. They've brought their first airplane, and as their student population grows, they have plans. plans for more. Matt Buzeli has moved his business, the Tacoa Group, to the Paulding County Airport. This is in the old office space that my office used to occupy. And so Matt is now in there as a land developer and entrepreneur in Paulding County. Last year, the 10-year contract came to an end with Paulding Jet Center. And we made the determination that the Paulding County Airport Authority would run the FBO. So we've now celebrated our one-year anniversary. That's going very well. And we're very pleased with the direct contact that we now have with the flying public when they come in and need flatline services. So we're able to provide that. And education, this is a huge emphasis for us. We've been talking now for about three or four years about the Chattahoochee Tech School. And, you know, some people begin to wonder, is this real or not? I like to say that it's moving at the speed of government. Things take time to work through the government system, as y'all are painfully aware. And so in the background, this has been making steady progress all along. And where we are today is the project is now fully funded, the money's in the bank, the design plans are just about completed. Chattahoochee Tech is in the final phases of selecting their construction manager. And once that selection is made, they'll go to bid for their general contractor. And I believe that you will see a groundbreaking ceremony in the spring, maybe about six or eight months from now. And then it will begin to feel real. We'll begin to actually see something coming out of the ground. And all of the planning, all of the design, all of the year's worth of work that has gone into this project will pay big benefits for us. We're talking about a 60,000-square-foot facility. That's about three times the size of our terminal. And you know that our terminal is not a small building. So this is going to be a big footprint there at the Paulding County Airport, and we're just very excited to have it. I've already mentioned the two private flight schools and the museum. These are education focuses that we have. The museum just celebrated their one-year anniversary, so they're up and running now, well-established. They've got plans to build a terminal. I'll show you kind of an artist rendition of that in a couple of slides. But we're very excited to have the museum as a tenant at the airport. And then, of course, we've continued our partnership with the Board of Education. We support their STEM Expo every year, as well as other functions. Last year, because of COVID, we were actually the location of one of the high school's prom. That was a little different for us. But we have a lot of school dances, school events, ROTC activities that take place at the airport. So we're very happy with our partnership that we have with the Board of Education. This is just a rendition. This is not what the final product will look like, but just a placeholder to kind of show, give you a taste of what the Chattahoochee Tech Building will look like. And likewise for the museum, this is our main parking lot. You see the main terminal sort of off to the upper right. And off to the upper left is a new building that will be constructed, hopefully in the next year or two, that will be the permanent home for the Museum of Flight. So the only empty space that we have at the entire airport that's already been constructed is the second floor of the Business Center. We've got about 6,000 square feet of floor space. And we actually use this about three months out of the year. The Fire Marshal every year gives us a warehouse, temporary warehouse occupancy permit, and West Ridge rents this out for November, December, and January each year for their Toys Program. So we're actually getting use out of this space as well. But we would like to see this space converted to permanent office space, meeting space, classroom space, whatever it may be needed for. But you know, I'm never short on requests and needs and what have you. So I'm just warning you that you're going to hear about this space more in the future. And then, of course, expansion. Let me just go ahead to the picture. This is the picture you've all seen many times. This is our five-year plan. It's been fully vetted, it's been the subject of a public hearing. You've approved it. The Paulding County Airport Authority has approved it. The FAA's approved it. GDOT has approved it. So for the first time in a very long time, the Paulding County Airport is now marching to a unified plan with all of the government entities that have a role and a stake in this property, being on the same page as documented by official votes, official minutes, official documentation, saying, this is the plan and this is the direction we're moving in. This year, we received about $350,000 and an almost 100% grant, which is very unusual, but thankful to all of the federal money that's been made available for the past couple of years due to COVID. And we're now about a third through the design of the T-hangers, the airport, the first phase of the airport parkway extension, and the connection of our sewer line to the City of Dallas sewer line. So everything in green on this picture is new. That will all be new development. It basically will double the size of the airport and more than triple the available facilities that we have. And that will allow us now to attract new business, to bring new aviators, and to really make this airport what it was intended to be. And if you want to know what the future looks like, this is what the future of the Paulding County Airport looks like. This is a picture that we took when we had the paving project going on up at Cartersville. And Phoenix Air had to bring their entire fleet to the Paulding County Airport. So for about two and a half months, Phoenix Air operated not out of Cartersville, but out of the Paulding County Airport. And we had, on a daily basis, about 30 airplanes. And these are not airplanes that sit idle. The airplane, the gray airplane, right in the center of the north ramp, is their 24/7 International Ambulance. And that airplane flew all over the world from the Paulding County Airport. Now, when it comes back, we don't have a customs agent on site, so they have to come into one of the international points of entry and then back to the Paulding County Airport. But other than that, that airplane was operating internationally. And the Lear jets that you see sort of surrounding that are the National Air Ambulances that Phoenix Air operates. And so they were on a moment's notice. They were popping all over the nation, and we had to be ready. We were on call 24/7 during that time. So if you saw my staff a little bleary-eyed on some days, that was why. We were getting callouts in the middle of the night to make sure they were serviced and ready to go. And so that gave us a feel for what the operating tempo of this airport might look like in five years. And it was, I'll tell you, it was a good feeling to know that we are ready today with the facilities and the staff. We know how to operate at this tempo. And we believe that when this five-year plan is built out, we'll be ready to go for that level of business activity in Paulding County. So my staff wants to thank you. I want to thank you for the support that you have continued to give us. The last couple of years have just been a great partnership, and we are beginning to see some really, really good results now from all of that. And here's the Motley Crue themselves. This is my full-time staff at the airport. Not a lot of us, but we get an awful lot done, a bunch of busy people. And I'll be happy to answer any questions or take any comments or criticism that you might have.
Terry, of course, being on the board, I get a lot of good information. But for the people in the room and watching on Channel 23, to be doing the fueling, refueling ourselves, just comment on, you know, how we're no longer allowing another company to make the money off the fuel.
Well, so for example, when Phoenix Air announced that they were going to come to Paulding County, first of all, they were only going to bring their big jets. They were not going to bring the Lear jets, the smaller jets. And the first piece of equipment that they brought out was the 24/7 International Air Ambulance. And they were so happy with the service they were getting, they said, no, we're not going to mess with that other airport. We were going to take our other equipment to. And they brought everything to us. During that three months, we made about $60,000 in revenue off of the fuel sales to that one customer. That's a lot of money. It was a lot of work. But off of that $60,000, we got to put about $20,000 of it back into the operational budget. So that's money that plowed back into, directly into our operations that would not have otherwise. So being able to perform those functions directly brings additional revenue. But it also allows us to touch the customer directly ourselves as the representatives of the airport. And that has a lot of intangible value to it, we believe. And it's just given us a better experience as airport managers.
So you've got two deer that can jump over the 10-foot fence.
Well, I've got one on the radio and one with binoculars. And they radio to the others if they ever see a gate open. So we have to watch them very closely.
I like to make sure Yolanda gets recognized. She does so much for the airport. She's in the back there.
Absolutely.
Yolanda Newell.
I'd like to tell people she's the finest boss I've ever worked for.
Thanks so much, Terry. Anybody else come in?
Thank you all.
We don't have anybody who signed up for the participation on the agenda items. Moving on to the consent agenda, I have to read them. At the work session is to confirm the 2022 Paulding County Board of Commissioners designated holiday schedule. Item number six is the Paulding County Sheriff's Office would like to request the Board of Commissioners retire or surplus Deputy Jason Garland's Service Weapon Glock Model 21 with the serial number there. Deputy Garland resigned on September 30, 2021, and has met the service requirement of 15 aggregate years. Number seven is to adopt Resolution 21-29, reappointing Doug Gober to the Paulding County Board of Assessors. And number eight is to adopt Resolution 21-30, reappointing Gary Spinks to the Paulding County Board of Assessors. And lastly, number nine is declare the following items listed as surplus and to approve their disposal through auction or destruction if necessary. And they're listed there on your page. And I would ask if any of the Commissioners would like to move any of these consent agenda items to regular business. Hearing none, they'll stay on the consent agenda. Moving right on to old business, excuse me, is number 10, discuss action to approve house plans submitted by Smith Douglas Homes for compliance with Sweetwater Overlay District Building Design Requirements for Zoning Case 2007-04Z located in Post 3. This item was tabled from the September 28, 2021, meeting to the October 26, 2021, meeting today. The item was moved forward to this agenda to be considered by the Board, and Ms. Ann Lippman to report.
Thank you all. As I mentioned last month, this is a new consideration for the Board of Commissioners. We recently made some changes to the Sweetwater Overlay District, and we removed some of the housing standards that each house had to meet, and we switched that to house plans needed to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. This was tabled at the last meeting, and since that time, I believe several Commissioners and staff, myself and Scott, have spoken with Representative of Smith Douglas Homes. And they have Representative Mr. Keith Adams here today, if you have any direct questions from him. Upon looking at the things, Smith Douglas did provide us, they have what is called a monotony rule, which that monotony rule really ensures variety. It doesn't allow monotony, it prevents monotony. They have also agreed to install a brick water table on the street-facing sides of any houses that are on corner lots. Most of the house plans, and just as a reminder, they submitted 11 house plans, and each of those had four to five elevations. So there would be a total choice of 45 options that people had for houses. And as this is in a PRD, it is required to have covenants. And prior to any final approval, planning and zoning staff will review those covenants and make sure that they have mechanisms in place to keep the brick table and the monotony rule in place. And with that, I don't think we have any hesitation approving these 11 house plans. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, along with Scott and Mr. Adams, if you have any for him.
Ryan, you always do a good job explaining things. So, you know, sometimes we feel like, and we're so involved with the process of a lot of these items that it's hard for us to explain to the citizens. So I figured I'd at least bring this up a little bit as far as, it's kind of a new process, or it is a new process. It's the county moving forward in how we're looking at zonings, more accountability, instead of just sitting there saying, we're going to give you zonings. I mean, look what happened in 2008, all them failed subdivisions. Come back, and it's a different set of style, plans, and whatnot. But glad to see, you know, was able to sit down with Smith Douglas, work out a few items that we had. And, you know, the whole, what is it, like a six or nine block, they can't have the same elevations. I mean, you know, that does help as far as not keep things the same old house in a row, you know. But so, and then, you know, the corner lots being the water table and stuff like that. So, you know, as far as for us to sit here and say we like, and we'll pick out every plan that we want to live in, I mean, we can't do that, but we can sit down and work with them so that we try to ensure we have a good product moving forward. So thank you, and your team. I know this is the first one, so I know we've got a lot more to work out. But just really glad to see it, so that more accountability moving forward with zonings, I mean, the developers and stuff. So thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Appreciate it. Under new business, item number 11 is discuss action to approve the purchase of a new pump in the amount of $73,426.40 with, or from, Xylem Water Systems USA Incorporated to replace the damaged pump at Riverwood Pump Station, Post 1. Ms. Ashmore to report.
Thank you. The Riverwood Pump Station is, well, actually, let me back up a second. You know, we're normally up here talking about capital projects, and today we're switching gears a bit to talk about a pump station within the existing system. The Riverwood Pump Station is, serves the Riverwood Development and surrounding developments in the planning stages. The pump station runs on 230 horsepower flight subversible pumps. And one of the pumps is currently out of service and needs to be replaced. The pump was severely damaged by debris in the sewer system. These pumps are designed to pass solids, and more malleable solids, but not of the size and the density that came to it. We started out looking for a repair of this pump, and the repair of the pump is at $55,710 without a warranty. And so, oh, actually, it's a one-year warranty, only on the parts, and a repair time that's 10 to 12 weeks. They've also quoted us on a new pump at $73,426.40 with a warranty, 100% warranty on the first 18 months, dropping to 50% warranty in, from months 19 to 39, and a 25% warranty on months 40 to 60. Flight is our standard pump in the Paulding County system, and therefore is brought to you as a sole source purchase. We want to also assure you, we are looking for participation in the cost of this from where the debris entered the system. If I can answer, and you've got photos of some of the damage and some of what's been found in the system.
There's some pretty ugly photos. It may be a dumb question, but why wouldn't there be a filter? You mentioned malleable solids would, the pump could handle, but why wouldn't there be some kind of a grate or a filter, so something that could damage and causes kind of damage and need for replacement?
The, there can be. There can be a screen or something that will eat up. There can be a screen or something that will eat up and break apart some of the solids. It is another point of continued expense in the system. It's also a maintenance, there are maintenance issues with some of that equipment and the risk of if they would blind and not operate properly, you are talking about a spill.
One plus. There's some construction going on out there that's kind of pertaining to causing this way.
You see the gravel and the concrete debris? Yes.
Yeah, that's not typically what would be in a sewer system.
No. And I want people to understand that we repair these kind of things on a routine basis. It is the size of the pump that we're talking about here that is a, that drives that cost up. But we are, that's just a part of doing business, is repairing the, repairing pumps. But most of those are done under $50,000.
What's the timeframe on getting a new pump?
They're ready to ship it. It'll be airfreighted to us.
Two words that I'd never like to hear, sole source. Any other companies you know of coming on board?
Well, there's no one else that supplies the standard pump in the system. And the idea of having standardized pumps in the system is for maintenance and consistency in maintenance and being able to get them repaired. So from a replacement standpoint, there is not anyone else that we can purchase from. They are our, they are the regional vendor for a Flight pump. We've had good reliability out of Flight and out of these pumps over the years. And they are, they are our standard when someone installs a new pump station.
Lori, is this pump currently offline, or are you guys able to get it serviced?
No, that pump is offline.
Is it?
We have a rental that's bypassing.
Thank you, Lori. That is the conclusion of our regular business. No one is signed up for non-agen items. We do have a need to go into executive session, but before we do that, if any of the commissioners would like to make any comments about events coming up, or any comments at all, floor
I'm going to go. I just want to say thank you to Terry. He has done a great job out there. Things are progressing like nobody ever thought that they would or could. And a lot of that has to do with Terry and his pushiness. But thank you, Terry, and keep on pushing.
Something I didn't know about that was, it's a national event or a national movement. It's called Faith in Blue. And they kicked things off Friday, one event out here in Veterans Park, a half dozen events. And I was just really impressed and thankful that our, some pastors, our clergy, churches integrated with our law enforcement to recognize the need for both those working together. To me, it just exemplified more what I think this board and staff are looking for in the overall Team Paulding efforts to make our community and our county stronger. So kudos to law enforcement and all the public safety folks that participated. I'd also like to thank two of the post-commissioners here, Brian and Keith, particularly with their knowledge of building, them getting so involved with community development, Anne's team, and looking at the planning and zoning and, you know, having more knowledge of what's good for the community and what maybe is not so good anymore. That said, I wanted Keith Adams, who's sitting back there, to come up and meet the commissioners, if you would, Keith, afterwards, and, or as we're adjourning to go to executive session. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion. I'm not cutting anybody off, am I?
Well, I want to bring up, you know, Georgia sometimes seems to have some of our sports teams do well and then fall off, but I just want to say congratulations to the Bulldogs. I mean, I don't know about how Jason feels about that, being from Alabama, but what happened there. But also the Braves. So go Braves, they play again today, so.
Go Braves.
Bulldogs. I'll let my wife see that.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for real estate, and we also have potential litigation.
Make a motion to go into executive session for real estate?
Motion by Commissioner Stobers, our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dunn.
Third.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. We stand adjourned to executive session.